Ready, okay. Good evening, welcome to Brisbane Planning Commission regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and eighteen. And this is our first meeting in two year two thousand and eighteen. I wish all of you happy new year. With that, we'll start the meeting and I'll call to order.
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Mackin?
Here.
Commissioner Minier?
Here.
Commissioner Sayasan?
Here.
We'll have the adoption of the agenda. Anyone wants to make a change? Any changes to the agenda?
Not for me.
Anyone from the audience want to add anything or remove anything from the agenda? No, so.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda of Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Consent calendar. The items listed here as consent calendar items are considered routine and will be acted upon collectively by one motion adopting the planning department's recommendation unless a member of the public, the commission, or its staff asks to remove an item to discuss it. Prior to the motion, the chairperson will ask if anyone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar. So it's my duty to ask all of you, every one of you. Any changes, anything you want to take it out from these two items?
I have an inter.
No.
No.
No, okay. So we have two items here, the approval of draft action minutes November fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, and November twenty eighth, two thousand and seventeen. I wasn't present at the November two eight, twenty eighth, two thousand and seventeen meeting, so I will abstain from that. So that's, want to make a motion to approve this?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the draft action meeting minutes of November fourteenth and November twenty eighth, two thousand and seventeen, respectively.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Oral communications. This is the time anyone in the audience want to speak before the planning commission, any items that are not on the agenda? Nope. Written communications, we have the memorandum from Giulia Caprasso regarding the study session today, that was not part of the package, right? Was that?
That was the packet.
Yeah. Okay, other than that, there is not, that was part of the package, okay. So there, other than that, there is nothing, no written communications. And with that, we will start the study session. Today, tonight is going to be a very interesting session. This is my second, or maybe a third, session regarding this three thousand to three thousand five hundred Marina Boulevard. I almost given up on that project, it was several years back, that we approved this project, and I thought, I don't know what happened. So I'm glad that you came back again with the new proposal, and we're looking forward to hear from you. So we'll start with the staff first. Do you want to do that before I read what the, this is about? The study session is about three thousand to thirty-five hundred Marina Boulevard, study session for proposed modification of design permit DP dash five dash oh seven, variance V dash one zero dash one, one dash zero eight, and parking modification use permit UP dash three dash zero eight, including revised site plan, building layout, and onsite parking and circulation. Sierra Point LLC is the owner. With that, staff report.
Yes, thank you Chair. So the study session tonight is to give you guys a preview of a forthcoming planning application to modify the design permit for development on this site, three thousand to thirty-five hundred Marina Boulevard in Sierra Point. As the Chair alluded to, the planning commission had previously approved, and also upheld by the city council, a design for a two-building office development at the site, as well as a five-level structured parking garage. And this was back in, again, two thousand and nine. The planning commission also saw last year, an extension of the development agreement that was approved for this project. The development agreement vested the project approvals for a certain amount of time. Last year, you saw and recommended approval to the council, a modification to that development agreement to extend the time period further, as well as address some leasing of another parcel that was relinquished back to the city, to the city's control. Subsequent to that development agreement modification, a new potential buyer of the property has come forward with a R and D and life sciences proposal for the site. And based on the unique needs of a life sciences development, they've identified several modifications that would be needed to the previously approved building and site designs. So this would be processed as a modification to the existing design permit, and any other permits that would be required per the revised design would also be seen by, by you all at that time as well. So again, tonight, the purpose is for the owners' representatives to show you the preliminary proposal, and hopefully have a kind of high-level discussion, a conversation with you about the, the drive behind the new design proposal, and get a little bit of dialogue going on there. And I'll show you, just as a refresher, just change our source. So on your screens, you'll see the previously approved site plan, which was attached to the staff memo in your packet. As you can see here, again, two office buildings, one eight stories, the other ten stories, with the five-level garage adjacent to the highway, as well as a significant amount of surface parking lot. And another part of this project that's shown in this site plan as well, are improvements to the bay trail, which does run around Sierra Point. Those were, the proposal in the approved design permit was reviewed and approved by B C D C. We understand there may be some additional modifications to the bay trail component as well as part of the modified design permit. Here are some simulations of the view going south on Highway one oh one of those two approved buildings. View here from the bay trail, where you can see that five-level garage and building in the foreground. And there's the ten-story building, and the ten-story, eight-story building seen right next to each other. So I think I'll turn it over to the applicants at this time, to walk you through their proposed modifications.
Okay.
My name's Mike Garrity, I'm with Phase Three Real Estate Partners. We're a life science real estate developer who has been building a portfolio of life science properties, specifically here in California. You probably have seen one of our most iconic projects just down the freeway, we acquired the Centennial Towers project, so the success factor's building. And so we've been building that twenty-one-story tower and looking to expand our footprint. We've been, we purchased a property from Opus, who became founders, Four Thousand Shoreline in Sierra Point, a few years ago, and through that relationship, got to know the owners of the site, and have been strategizing with them for quite some time on how we would approach it. And so finally, we're able to come to some terms that would allow us to come up with a design that really fit the needs of our tenants who take occupancy on our properties. And so we're excited to present sort of our concept, to how to really activate this site for life science. And so we brought with us our team, which is Skidmore Owens and Merrill, and so on, by Michael Duncan, to come up and walk you through sort of our concept, and we'll be available for any questions you guys have.
Thank you.
You need the mic.
Need the mic.
Minimum.
Maybe you can bring the mic over there.
Come to you.
All right, try this first.
You from Skidmore?
Yeah. The, first of all, it's a terrific, terrific site, and we're very excited by it, and the idea of putting over that campus-style building on this, on this site seems like a really good opportunity, and I think we've got wonderful partners on this. So, little project overview, you're familiar with the site, maybe a couple times through, I don't need to tell you about it. And this is the footprint of the approved project. You can see there's the eight-story building, it's really right on, on the face. I've got a little model, I know last time we were, you kind of see, scale the model So, this is the approved scheme. And you can see, it pushes forward on the site, puts the parking along the freeway as we saw. And it's, I would say, it's a little bit more of a kind of traditional suburban development, except it off towers. And what we thought, what we're really taking advantage of the site and having this more campus style was a real opportunity, you know, there's terrific views, it's high visibility, you come down the freeway here, it's kind of the signature site on Sierra Point, you've got great views up to the mountains, you've got terrific views out to the bay, you've got nice views over Sierra Point. So we want to optimize them. We know about the winds, wind's a big issue, so how we, what public spaces we have, we'd really like to screen them from the wind.
But this layout is similar to what we had before, right?
This is the previous layout.
That's what I was wondering, so.
They've got another one over there.
That's the old one, yeah. Because I was wondering, I said, how come it looks familiar?
Just a couple things about the site, because really you guys seen that, the campus one development, so.
Okay.
We are looking at not just having office building, or lab buildings, we're looking at having fitness center, restaurant, dining, event spaces, boardrooms, outdoor cafe, it's lab, office combination, primarily lab, and dividing it then into three buildings. And what we've done, what's really important here is, we've made a, a large kind of public space out that's screened, and takes advantage of its location on the wall. Just a couple of the basic facts, six stories tall, five and six stories tall building on two stories of parking base, floor floor height's a little bit higher than office, these are labs and sixteen-foot floor to park, we have an eighteen-foot ground floor level. It's all laid out, do a bit of a module that's appropriate for labs. We also want to create kind of a great entry here, too. And, you know, the perception on this is you're really coming across a field of parking here, you really want to make a kind of a very nice front door. And so that idea of not only being iconic from the freeway, embracing its location on the, really, one of the few bay properties that's out there, providing views for everyone that way, but also then making a really terrific entrance this way.
And did you say, like, you're, you're excavating two floors of?
We're not, not excavating, that's, we need to cap the site.
Did you say two floors of parking then?
Two floors of parking create a kind of podium, you could see.
Oh, is that two floors then?
Yeah, two floors.
Raised up.
And then, then, three floors on top of that.
Okay, by scale, by scale, that didn't look like two floors to me, but that, that is about.
There's, that's four floors of parking on that garage, so maybe like.
Got it.
And as you, as you know, there's, there's, um.
Yeah.
It's quite a slope on the, on the freeway here.
Right.
As you approach it, so this is up, you're up twenty-three feet or something, so you're almost at this, this level here, and it starts to come down, and there's a little bit of divide here. So that motion here is, you're almost up at that with this almost hard to show ground This is a, a view on the screen of the, this is the courtyard level plan, that you're up on. Level, level two, we're calling it. Drop-offs, maybe I can use my pointer here. We have a, a front door drop-off here, and you're able to then go in, come upstairs into three lobbies here. There's also a lower entry level at the ground floor. We have some surface level parking here, and then we have, are able to enter the parking really on three sides, and we can service each of the buildings. So this is also another nice thing about this raised podium, allows us to get access to, to each of these lab buildings. We've, we've located the event spaces on the courtyard level, and the board and trading rooms on the level, training room, so this is really kind of almost a public floor for this campus, if you think of it like a university campus. These can be shared functions. And then from this level, you actually have views out toward the water. Incorporating the bay trail, as the previous plan did, we're pulling it into the site, and then running it along the western edge, and at this point, we are delivering it back to Marina Boulevard. We don't know if we want to actually continue it to the south, and yet that's a good study question to have. We're also very aware, kind of, the sensitivity of, of this zone between the freeway and the site, it's an area that needs to be cleaned up a little bit, but it has potential to be a nice kind of habitat zone, so we want to really encourage that, as well as having kind of sympathetic landscaping along the, the bayfront. There's a section on the right that shows those two levels of parking, you can sort of get a sense of it, and then four levels of office, office, lab, on the two wings. We have total at the moment of, of eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty spaces, and we'll get more into parking counts and requirements, and the previously approved requirements on the site is significantly more than that, and we'll, we'll talk about it. But there's also quite a big offset between office use, which has a kind of a clear parking ratio, and then lab use, which is significantly less in terms of density, as well as possible We have transformers and generators on the south side of the site, right down here. These facilities are very important to, like today, keep, keep the power on, and we don't want to lose.
But they will be screened though, right, and all of this?
Yes, they will be screened. They're screened, and, and really probably have a fence around it, too. Here's the typical floors for each of these three. They divide up well in terms of potential individual tenants, or smaller tenants, or actually possibly a single tenant taking one or two buildings. These floors are set up so that they can have atrium connections between them, like this building we did here at Harvard Labs, where we, these communicating stairs become important parts of, of communication, and as well as community building. And we just, these are lab buildings, so they have a lot of mechanical equipment on the roof. You can see this is one that we did at UCSF on the right-hand side that screens this mechanical equipment, and this can be pretty significant in terms of heights. And here's the roof plan with this mechanical penthouse is laid out. We have two four-story buildings here and here, and we put a fifth level on this building here. Gets a little bit extra view, a little bit more presence on the freeway. We just want to compare this layout with our, our current layout, and you can sort of see the ghost in between. So we've actually pulled our three buildings, C-shaped building, back from the edge on this area here, so this was the previous corner, which really was almost aligned or in front of its neighbor. We've pulled it back a bit, and then opened that view, and opened that connection, and also kind of, I think, eased the presence on the, on the bayfront, too, as well. And rather than having four-story parking garage along the freeway edge, we have this podium piece of two stories, and we have then active uses and, and labs, and we think it may be a friendlier face toward the freeway. This is a view looking back from the bay. One of the interesting things we're, we're doing also is putting a health club right here in the podium. We think that could be a great benefit for users here, but also maybe a very nice thing for along the bay trail. You have a place to stop, you have workout space, maybe juice bar or something like that, could be a destination if we play this right. And it engages then right with the, with the edge and the recreational uses, as well as kind of seating and overlook and stepping down the landscape to the, to the site. Here's another view. My apologies on the, the bay trail, the bay trail actually turns that way, not here, but it gives you a little sense of how this could sit in the landscape, and how this raised podium then engages with the, the edge of the bay. So here, here's a summary of the scheme. We're reaching the same FAR, but we think it has a kind of a, maybe a stronger, first of all, market use, and also a great kind of community building and campus style for what we hope could be the future of Sierra Point. So maybe I'll pause there, and give you kind of a sense of. Buildings are pulled forward to kind of up on the edge of the street here. Arrival plaza, we push back for additional, after a conversation, of a, maybe of a bigger, more generous arrival plaza here. We've pulled back a little bit further from our neighbor here in order to get fire truck access, and I think that would be a little bit easier. I think the landscape is going to be an important part of how we screen the base, we really want this to feel like it's based on a kind of a landscape base rather than a parking base. So we'll be burning edges, we need to provide natural relation through, we hope, but we only need to do it over the broad side to open, so we're going to landscape and burn the other side.
So is power for the facility being generated by solar panels?
We had, we had a good discussion about solar panels. The previous proposal had really significance of solar panels along the, the top of the garage. We were identifying areas, not nearly quite the percentage that we could get on that scheme because of the open space, and as we've gotten our hands around, our minds around how much mechanical we need, that area has decreased a lot. I think there's still opportunity for some, but not, not nearly what was in the proposed scheme. We could have some opportunities down here, but you know, really the productive services are really, you know, the south-facing edges here. So this is really, these are the pretty large mechanical units on the top.
Have we had a lot of discussion regarding this in two thousand and nine, about the solar panels, and.
Okay, sorry.
About, about the use of the solar panels and all that, and there were some concerns at that time, actually, I, I did not go for that, that particular scheme. The reason was that there was not enough solar power proposal at that time. They were just going to put it on top of the, the.
Garage, right.
Parking garage. And the, that parking garage was also, I thought that it was kind of strange to have it right along the freeway, where you wanted to show your building, and all you were showing is the parking garage. But again, that was the scheme at that time, and that was one of the big issue we had, and also the, the sustainability standards, we were very concerned about that. So I guess when you go to the second step, once we approve, look at this particular project in terms of the layout and all that, I guess you're going to come back with, to us with the more detailed design elements, what you're going to do with the solar and parking spaces and electrical car.
Yeah, we will.
All of that stuff will be, will have to be reviewed by the planning commission at some point, I assume.
There are, will be many sustainable features incorporated into that.
Yeah.
That's consistent. Solar is, 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 we, I don't think we'll be able to achieve nearly what the previous proposal had, just because our roof spaces are smaller now, given the mechanical needs on top. Parking is a good, is a good discussion, and probably one that we should start to have now, because we're not going down, nothing goes down in this, we really have to build up, and we don't really want to build a third level of parking.
Yeah.
And I think we've seen, and we have a parking consultant, we have a traffic consultant, we've also, we've master planned for Genentech as well, and we understand how their, their parking demands have actually gone down significantly in the last few years, but they have an excellent TDM program, but they've also, just the, the use and type of people who are using it are not, it's not nearly the demand that it was.
Yeah, if it comes to the parking, there is not adequate parking, one of the things we had to do at some point will be compromise in terms of what else you're going to provide, you know, the shuttle services and all of that kind of stuff. So we can discuss that at the point where we reach there, and.
I do think that's probably one that the, the developers' interest, and.
Yeah, we will.
Requirements are probably right in line, in that they don't want to build a property that's underserved.
Yeah, we will, we will discuss today if you want to, but what I'm saying is that we'll tie in with.
Good.
You know, the shuttle services and what kind of, you know, incentives you will have for the employees and all of that, and as well as the entrance to the building itself from the freeway, whether it's going to impact the freeway ramps and all of that. So tho, those traffic circulation things will, we will be interested to find that out also.
I think we're, we're clear of all.
Yeah. And we need to have the emergency exits, you know, the, at least two point of entrance and exits, so that in case of an emergency, you can get out. And one of the concerns we had is the freeway entrance, and there's only one way to get out.
Right.
And that's, that's something has to be, to be looked at it again. And when, when you don't have enough solar, the sources here, we will probably will like to see more, more of a conservation effort, to put more, you know, the insulations and all.
Right.
To, to prevent the heat loss or, or in case of.
And make them really high-performance buildings.
High-performance buildings, so we may have to jack it up, that portion of that, so that you can compensate that part, so. Anybody else has any? I mean, I have to start jumping up with my questions.
I have a question for you on the solar, if I might.
Sure.
Since you talk about the need for extensive screening for mechanical on the rooftops, is there any way, and this is totally a, a neophyte question, instead of just putting screening, to have part of that screening angled to be solar panels? Because the site that you're talking about has extensive sunshine all day long, so that if your screening was really solar panels, you'd be able to capitalize on that different times of the day, which would at least contribute something.
I think that's a, it's a very good idea. You know, we're looking at, this, this is the south-facing surface.
Right.
I mean, that surface has potential, less so east and west, and so there may be something there, 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 that we can look at, on those large penthouses.
Right.
And I think we're definitely looking into that. And my worry is that it's not going to be, it's just not quite the, the surface area that the previous panels have had.
But you might be able to come up with something aesthetically pleasing, incorporating the panels that is very innovative-looking.
And also nowadays, there are, there are options available to may put an insulated panel with solar part in the windows itself. I've seen some of those ideas floating around.
That's right.
It's possible that.
So I think we'll, we'll look at all, all possible options.
It's possible to put those, those type of elements. Anybody else has any questions for, yeah, go ahead.
In terms of the, the two-level parking and then this courtyard, is there anything being incorporated for gray water, capturing rainwater, filtering that back? Because that's something we've done here at City Hall, and that's going to be an artificial ground level. It would be nice to see something involved in that. You've got a, an opportunity to recycle there.
Yeah, I think particularly in recycle and use for landscaping, and irrigation, it's a good idea.
And also the site investigation will tell you about the material underneath the ground, so you may have to deal with maybe a methane gas or stuff like that.
Yeah, I think the site at the moment, it hasn't been capped, but will have to be capped.
Cap, properly capped, so that will be another things we will be interested to know.
That's right.
How are you going to do that?
We'll, we'll have the details for that.
Yeah.
Go forward.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson, do you have any questions?
Yes, you mentioned parking, and I was wondering, how many spaces you have in your preliminary plan?
Eight forty-nine.
Yeah, we got.
Eight hundred and forty-nine.
Eight forty-nine. One of the things I was wondering is you have the, the bay trail crossing two lanes of traffic, you know, the entrance and the exits for the exterior parking lot, and I was wondering if you could potentially send that trail around the outside. It looks sort of like, you know, the spaces that you have drawn in there go right up to the property edge, and I don't know if there's room next to where you have the electrical there. So you know, you'd likely lose some parking spaces.
Something like that.
If you did that, but I, I think that would be a huge improvement for the, the trail. I, I don't think it'd be very positive to be, you know, having people going across where everyone's coming in and out of that lot. So I was wondering if your, your eight hundred and forty-nine spaces, is that right at the limit of what you need, or?
Well, it's probably below, it's, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's a.
I mean, below what you think you need for the new unit?
I think it's probably about what we need. So. So. I, this is still fairly early on, I'm sure we can figure out a way to massage that corner and, and squeeze a little edge and, and make sure, I, I, good suggestion, let's look at that.
And, you know, you're mentioning that you don't have nearly the, the solar, have you done any estimation? I, I've made a, I heard that life sciences may have a higher electrical demand, especially with all of that equipment on the.
That's right.
Roof and do you have a estim- a comparison of your estimated generation for the new plan versus the old?
Uh, we have.
Did you ever do that for the old?
We did, we did one in terms of percentage areas, but in terms of actual generation compared to use.
Yeah, I was wondering if you did a generation to use estimate for the old plan and have you done that, something like that for the new plan?
We have not, we have not done that for this.
It's one of these so.
Yeah.
The, the generation is.
Not a generation.
Generation that, that solar.
Right.
Would you mind, sorry, would you mind going to the dais or to the speaker? Thank you.
So I'm Neil Fox, I'm the CEO of Face3 Properties and we're really excited about this project and hope you like the, the, the new site plan. I, I think it brings a lot of greenery onto the site, makes it a much more tenant friendly site, particularly for what we try to achieve. And that is tenants that really engage in activity, not just their work activity, but activity at the site. We like to use the, the, kind of the phrase, activate the core. Get, get a lot of activity going in the core of the project and that's why we bring in these courtyards. We have something very similar in San Diego where we have three buildings around a big courtyard, around a gym with a lap pool. We just finished a new restaurant. And if you haven't had the opportunity to go to a life science project and kind of see what makes it different, we would be happy to take you through our project. And some of the other projects that would be really worthwhile for you to see, because I think Brisbane, for us, the reason we're excited about this project is we're really. Almost more excited to develop a relationship with Brisbane. Because you have so much opportunity in, in, in the, in the industry. You know, South San Francisco is the number one location in the world for, for life science. And a natural growth point for it is to Brisbane and it's a very clean, very high paying jobs, very, just really. Great people to be around. That's the one thing as a, somebody that's been working in the industry since, you know, eighty-five, that I've really enjoyed. Is, it's just an incredibly great people in the industry and they're working on just the science that will blow your mind. But in regards to the solar in particular, what we want to do is we want to try to capture the intent of what you all are looking for. We're going to be limited if we're able to design a site that works for our intended use and our intended users. And we're kind of stepping out on a limb because Brisbane isn't known for life sciences. And so to do that, and we've shared this with Tom, who represents a seller, is we don't want to come and do a class B. We don't want to come and do a class B plus. We don't want to come and do a project that is anything but the best in the marketplace. Because we're stepping into a new market that we're going to have to convince users that are used to South San Francisco. To come next door in, to Brisbane. And so for us, it's really important to do it right. Because this, this project is so big and such a big piece of our portfolio, we can't afford to fail. And so we will try to match the intent. Like we, just before this meeting, we had a, a meeting with a battery pack company. To where we can pull during the very cheap hours of, of electricity off the grid, store it. And then during peak times, charge it back into our buildings and help shave that way. So we're looking at all different ways to make our buildings more efficient, not only for us, but really for the benefit of our tenants. But these buildings are ten, twelve, fifteen X the mechanical of what you see in a traditional office building. So the power requirements are substantially different to where unfortunately, you know, I, doing solar on my home, you can have a major impact on a home. Solar would never provide a major impact on, on these type of buildings.
So you, you mentioned the intent and, you know, really the intent is net zero and that's where California is going in terms of building requirements. But then we recognize that if you have something like a data center, that it's hard to get net zero. So I'm wondering in your existing projects, you know, you mentioned the battery for doing peak demand generation. But have you been planning for the, the net zero?
We can't.
Twenty thirty?
We, we.
I mean, are, are you?
Because we can't, we, we could never charge a rent associated with the cost of getting to net zero on a biotech. Only net zero building in life sciences that I know of is Craig Venter Institute up by UCSD. It's the only one I, I know of.
What, what's your timeline, is twenty thirty so far that you haven't planned it or?
You know, unfortunately, I'm not a, a engineer to be able to answer that. That would be much more somebody in, in, you know, the engineering side of our, of my world.
What's your timeline for this project? If, you know, if everything goes well, when do you expect construction to be finished?
Twenty twenty-one. I mean, we, we, our goal is to go as quickly.
Right, yeah, al- always, but you know, I'm less experienced in these things.
It's fitting, it's fitting well.
Your estimate, not holding you to it or?
Yeah, well, by chairman, it's fitting very well into our pipeline because we're finishing the, the north tower there. This would be a natural next project for us to start as soon as we're, we're finished there.
Okay, and, and also just for my edification, all of this equipment you have on the roof, is that just all HVAC or is there other stuff up there?
There's quite a bit of stuff, it generally like takes HVAC compressors.
There'll be chillers, coolers towers, lab exhaust, all that, so you know, we, we want to look at the, the volume and use the lab exhaust to minimize any air entrainment into the.
Again, you can please repeat this at the mic because there are people at home.
Yeah, my name is Hardik Gaurani.
Watching and trying to figure out what you're saying, you know.
Yeah, I'm Hardik Gaurani with Skid Morelands and Merrill. So in terms of the, the mechanical equipment, there's a lot of equipment that goes in there, including chillers, boilers. There's the air handling units, the, the lab exhaust, all of that kind of comes up through the shaft and it needs to be exhausted out on top. And we'll be looking at closely to see that, you know, there's no air entrainment in, with those exhausts, with the lab exhausts.
And by that, you, you clean contaminants before you let the exhaust out or what?
It's, it's more making sure that, you know, we, we don't get any lab exhaust that coming into the intakes of other buildings or business properties, yeah.
And what is the lab exhaust like in a typical life sciences building and?
So I'm, I'm not a mechanical engineer, but you know, it, these typically, we need to determine the, the height at which they need to be exhausted out above the roof level. So there's no containment of that and also using industry backed best practices, including ashtray standards. To make sure the exhaust velocities are appropriate.
I think the question you had was the mater- what the exhaust consists of. What kind of material you are ejecting into the atmosphere? Is it just a, just as a smoke or what's in there? The concern is you don't want to put something that can be hazardous to the nearby buildings.
Right, so that, that's kind of part of the kind of a wind tunnel study that would be done by a, a wind tunnel professional.
But you will have the composition of the material that you are releasing.
Right, I think that.
The gases that you are releasing into the, into the air.
So I'm not, I, I, I'm not an expert in this as well, but I know enough about it here a little bit. So all the, the hazmat that comes into these buildings is regulated principally by the fire departments. So, but there is a standard and we have to keep track of every material that the scientists are using in their studies. And have that on file and file it with the, the appropriate authorities. So it is something that is extremely tracked, both on our end, we hire and, and what do they call it, environmental? We, yeah, we ha- hire a health and safety specialist that comes in and since we're doing more, typically what you see is. Genentech has these people within their company, our ABC company has a person within their company that handles all this and does all the filing and the paperwork. Since we have multiple tenants of our projects or our buildings, we, those tenants have to do it themselves. They have their own requirement, but then we also make certain that they're all complying because we hire our own, own third party consultant to come in and oversee all the hazard, hazardous materials that are in the building. But, but nothing that goes out of these buildings is, I mean, these are people that are working in front of this material, you know, day in and day out. It's, it's not stuff that is particularly hazardous unless it's potentially, you know, I, the only thing I can imagine if there was something ever spilled in some enormous quantities. But typically, the quantities that scientists work with at a benchtop are so small that they don't pose a health threat to any, anybody in the lab. And if, if they are, you know, special types of, of material, they are, have certain protocols that they have to operate under.
So there is an agency that regulates that.
Oh yeah, absolutely. And, and truthfully, I mean, I've been involved in this industry from a real estate standpoint and. I got out of college in eighty-four, eighty-five and, and I can tell you, I mean, I just can't tell you an incident in San Diego where we've ever had. And we're the third largest market in the country and particularly a lot of small startup companies and it's, it's very safe industry. I mean, I just haven't, I couldn't go back in my memory and think of one time that there's ever been a, an emergency associated with a life science company in San Diego. Because of some toxic spill or explosion or any, or even a fire.
I think what we have to do is when, when the proposal comes before, the staff can review in conjunction with the other buildings in South San Francisco and see what, what they have. And yours will be probably similar to what they are releasing.
Under the same building codes, building standards and, and reporting requirements. That is principally, the people we principally have to satisfy is the fire department.
Yeah.
Those are the people that it seems like are more involved in, in what we're, we're doing and.
Now here, the concern was with the EPA, you know, you know, the, the gases that are coming out.
Yeah, no, we did not break any EPA thresholds and things like that.
I have a question, so from an aesthetic standpoint, with all the machinery up there, we're not going to be able, no one's going to be able to see it if they're walking or driving by.
No, it will be screened appropriately.
Okay, and what about like, I mean, will be, will, will we be seeing plumes of smoke coming out of it? No, okay.
No, I wouldn't see any in the Genentech book.
You, you guys have the benefit of, you, you can literally get in a car and drive around South San Francisco that, there's eighteen million square feet of life science space there. And, you know, you can look at our Centennial Tower buildings and see what's coming off the, the top of those. And you'll see that it's a very, very clean and safe industry. And particularly now that so much of the industry is going toward biologics. It's, I mean, they're, they're working with human tissue and, and, you know, cells. And it's, uh, it, it, there's nowhere, we're not seeing nearly the amount of, of chemistry type work that we used to see, you know, back in the, the, you know, late eighties and, and nineties. It's much more biologic based now, which is a much lighter lab use and, and that in part, that's why our, we've even shifted how much lab we're putting in the buildings. We're putting less lab in the buildings because more is done, more biology takes less lab space and also so much of the computing technology that's entered in. There's a lot of, the computing world merging with the, the, the life science world that is making the lab component actually get smaller.
Plus the other advantage you have in this particular site in Brisbane is that because of the high winds, so whatever is released, it will distribute very quickly into the environment.
Dilution is.
Yeah.
And we always do dilution studies and make certain that, you know, it's being diluted.
As, as very true.
Appropriately, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple more. I'm wondering about the, the permitted usage for your tenants. I didn't see anything about a conditional permit application in here, so I imagine you're not looking to do animal research or?
Well, my understanding is that i- in Brisbane, there's, there's no pet animal research allowed to be done. That, that rodents, mice is something that is, is allowed, so.
Is, that's a permitted use, not a conditional use?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so all, all I can say is that we'll be, uh, building, designing and leasing per the, the appropriate zoning.
Right, and you don't have any conditional use permits, it's all?
No, we're not anticipating that.
Okay. I think I'm down to my last one, it was just out of my curiosity, the fitness club operator, were you planning on operating that yourself or having one of your tenants operate it? Or bringing in a?
No.
An, an independent vendor?
We, we will have a vendor and it will most likely have, you know, third party trainers and will most likely open it up to, to part of the, the public or. You know, our gym at, at, that we're building, we're actually, we have a very small one, about five thousand square feet currently. And we're moving that into the north tower and doing basically a full floor gym that's about fifteen thousand square feet in, in the north tower and that will be open to the public as well. So again, having people come onto the campus, to the restaurant, to the gym and to other events that we would have there is something that we encourage. Because the more activity and people you bring into these campuses, the more vibrant they get and, 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 you know, the better they lease. You know, people like being around people.
Yeah. There's a building right next door to you in South San Francisco on Botanica Circle. They have the restaurants and all of that, same concept that you have.
Yeah.
And also the fitness center, have you, any of you visited that place?
The Cove, have you been to the, speaking of the.
I don't know the name of that, but it's right, the two new buildings that they're building right next to it is.
Yeah, it's the Cove.
It's a very nice, beautiful facility there.
It's wonderful and people lo- love it and it's also what they've done with the restaurant there, it's created a place where people can go after work and spend a little time and gather.
It's very, very nicely laid out, I really like that.
So our goal is simply, I mean, that's about a million square feet.
Yeah.
So when you have a million square feet, you can do things at a little bit different scale than when you have, you know, four hundred and, I think, whatever, four, four hundred and sixty-five thousand or thereabouts. But we intend to have all those same components in our project as, as you saw. We want to make certain our outdoor space is, is, is functional. The one thing we have heard is that it gets so windy at their location that, you know, it's really hard to use their outdoor courts in that center courtyard area. But they did, they did a fantastic job on that project and it's something that, you know, we want this project to emulate that and, and be very similar.
Except they don't allow public to go use their fitness center.
No, they don't. They didn't even let me when I just tried to peek in, that security guard got me, so.
So hopefully you will allow Brisbane residents, right?
Just one more clarifying question, it says the parking ratio is one point nine four, so does that mean you're expecting around sixteen, seventeen hundred employees at this facility?
Yeah, that, that, it may be a, a little more, a little less, but the one thing about life sciences, they're far less impactful, you know, because of the amount of space a scientist takes up. It not only takes up office space, but they also take up bench space and lab space. The other thing is there's a lot of rooms that never even have people in them, they're just like refrigerator rooms, cold storage rooms. There's large spaces in, in lab environments that just aren't, you know, uh, really filled with people. So we've never, ever seen lab buildings parked at four per thousand like office buildings. It's always been two and a half, you know, maybe three per thousand if you're all chemistry, or excuse me, all biology. Biology, you know, can put more people into the space than, than a chemistry user because they take up so much room with their chemistry.
So I'm sorry, the parking ratio then is, is that unit is parking spaces per some area of square feet or per person?
That's per, how, how many parking we have for.
One point nine four per thousand.
Per thousand square feet.
Per thousand square feet, okay.
To give you an idea, one of the newest life science projects built by Kilroy, they're a large REIT, office REIT and life science REIT. They built the exchange in Mission Bay, which is an area that also has a lot of life science and, and, but it's kind of getting pushed out by tech. Well, they were in the midst of doing, I think, like four or five deals with life science companies in the exchange. It's, it was about eight hundred thousand square foot project. They're parked at less than one per thousand and at, they're parked at like point nine. And we're just seeing like even SA. And we're just seeing like e- even uh SAP at our building, they only use like one per thousand. Because they they're so, they use such a a great shuttle service. And we're just seeing the parking requirements across the board in all our projects, you know, start trending down.
I think Genentech is a good example.
Come to.
So Genentech is also a good example, or they're currently trending towards a one point four uh ratio. On their, and you know, they have their own shuttles and employing the uh the other Sierra Point shuttle. So we 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 will look to employ other uh TDM.
Yeah, I think one one thing we will be interested interested to know, since your project is not one company only, there will be several tenants there. So how are you gonna manage the transportation element of that? Who will be controlling that? How are you gonna provide the shuttle services, uh or, you know, uh the, any kind of incentive for the people to take the public transportation? So that plan will be very interesting, we will be very interested to find that out. Because if you don't have the, if you have subsstandard parking, then we need to compensate with the those other elements.
Absolutely, yeah.
You're going to be leveraging the existing shuttle service, right?
That's correct.
Currently multi corporate back already, right?
Yeah, there's a proposal for shuttle stop at the at the site, so. And we'll have that as a comprehensive TDM plan.
So um do you have a high-low estimate on how many employees you're likely to have once all three buildings are occupied with tenants? Is that something that you estimate? Yeah, just a guess is good.
You can come again.
Or repeat in the mic.
I think we need, I think we need to have the mic where we can, people can take it around handheld.
So I I think that, you know, most of the time, and probably my name is Mike Gary, again with Phase Three. But most of the time, when people think of it, the office projects are planned really for about four people per thousand square feet. And a lab building has about two and a half, so with four hundred thousand feet, we're looking just north of a thousand, maybe eleven hundred employees, um which will be significantly less than the currently approved project would have.
The other question I have is all these employees that will be working there, are you working with the city of Brisbane as well as South City to provide the some kind of a housing or some type of a a plan where the the employees can get some kind of a discount to, so that they rent the place? I know the Facebook and other companies have the incentive for the employees that they get certain amount of money towards their rent. So in your case, um are you planning to incorporate some plan like that in future or?
No.
Okay, that was a pretty.
It it would it would be specific to the company, so let's say if J and J or or Genentech or Celgene or, you know, uh name any big pharma, uh decided that he wanted to come and lease his campus and they had a program. Um, that's that's the point, but at at our level, we would not be subsidizing you.
Because that that question always comes up and it's a very heated heated subject right now for both for the Brisbane as well as surrounding areas, housing, housing, housing.
It is.
And there are a lot of state legislations talking about housing prices, how we can solve that. And one of the ideas was to, if you have a, you know, a campus like that, can you provide the housing right at that location? So that you can have these certain floors that are meant for for housing, it's like a mixed-use type of development.
Yeah, we we've done mixed use in the past and and uh in certain areas, it's really appropriate. Um, it's also sometimes nice to create enclaves of science because they go together very well. Um, not to say, I mean, y- you you see science intermixed with residential in many places. But um, you know, that's something, we're not a residential developer. Our partnership, we we have a partnership with a a a major academic uh uh institution, endowment. And um uh our partnership with them is specific to the life sciences. So w- we don't even really have it in our joint venture to where we could go out and build residential. It's not, it's not what we do.
Yeah, because a lot of European countries are, uh recent trend is that they do, they try to provide some kind of a housing element with their project. And maybe you can partnership with some other developers and not right at the campus, but with close to the city, nearby city, where you can have a subsidized housing for the for the employees. So they don't have to travel all the way from Fremont to come to work at your facility.
May I ask a question of staff?
Well, uh we can.
Just what, we don't have any um residential approved at Sierra Point right now. Do we even have Marina?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Anderson? About?
I think I'm good.
I have a question.
Okay, we have a question here.
Um, observing all the life science building and especially Genesis, the second tower going up, I I'm just curious to know. So if you had a twenty twenty, twenty-two completion, how fast do you think? Obviously, you had to run some studies. How fast would you go to complete occupancy? Is it, is it in demand that you would think you would be able to fill it or is it something that you see parsing over several years?
So we always run models, performas for our projects. In this particular project, we have a three-year lease-up cycle. It may happen quicker than that, it could happen a little slower than that, but that's in order to hit our investment returns. That's what we targeted and shared with our uh investor.
So could you just give us an idea what current demand is in this area?
It's it's, well, I can tell you that, well, it's hard to say for Brisbane because we really feel like we're almost creating a new market, even though it's right next door. And you have the one um BMR project uh in in Brisbane. I'm not certain if I know of any others besides the one BMR project. I actually toured that project. Um, and I believe it was a conversion. I don't think it was a purpose-built project for life science. Um, but the the demand in general has been fantastic. There's a lot of money flowing into this industry, both from a scientific standpoint, companies wanting to invest or, you know, uh i- it's it's companies, it's it's big pharma, it's venture capital. Um, the money flow into new uh research is amazing. Um, Google Life Sciences is, you know, getting extremely large. They're in S- South San Francisco and I imagine will continue to grow. Um, Facebook will be getting into it. There's just, you know, twenty-three and me, ancestry dot com. All these companies that are creating so much data are starting to uh learn how to turn that data into uh s- science, scientific discoveries and applications. So um the demand is strong. I can tell you in our North Tower, we have nineteen leasable floors and we're in in the in paper negotiations with ten of them. And we can't deliver occupancy until uh August, September of this year. So it's it's good, it's very strong activity. This project, you know, lends itself to larger users because of of the size of the buildings and the campus environment. I mean, there's a potential that one company might come and lease this.
What is the biggest obstacle you face in making this something very marketable to prospective tenants?
Well.
Considering this particular location?
Yeah, so what I, what we always say is, you know, it's it's, this is a people business. And so y- you you kind of have to have everybody that's involved in making this happen. It's not just us. It's not our money partner, but it's also you all and the city. And it's been one of the true blessings of having coming up here and 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 doing this project, two projects now that we've done in South San Francisco. They've they've really come beside us as a partner. There there's always gonna be issues, there's always gonna be problems that we have to discuss and get through. But it's, they always have come beside us every step of the way and helped us figure out how to get to where it worked for them and worked for us and could help the project go forward. So, you know, that's one of the the, I think, the biggest obstacles. Because there is a perception that Brisbane is, you know, because there isn't a lot of life science, is a little bit anti-life science. It doesn't want to to see that the industry grow here. And that's where, you know, me and, quite frankly, me and Mike, we see that as an opportunity. You know, if we can come in and and do what we say we're going to do and and build quality product, project that you all like and you see the success and you see, you know, the activity it brings to Brisbane, we're hopeful that's something, you know, you guys want to see more of. Because it is high-quality jobs and it is high-quality people that will, that work in these places. And they're generally, you know, as smart as they are, they have very low egos and just love doing the work that they do. They're fun people and engaging uh people to be around. So uh we think it will be a big, um, you know, um blessing to your city if if you are in the path of the growth of this industry that's done so well at your neighboring city. Um, obstacles, I think perception is is probably the biggest obstacle. I know, you know, if we can get it priced and designed right with our team, we have a great team with, you know, SOM. Um, I think we can, I know we can develop a project and a product that tenants want to be in. Um, now it's a question of, you know, how hard is it for them to get into it? You know, what are the obstacles they're going to have to go through when they they, you know, come and want to do specific PIs or specific plans and and timeframes, you know? One of our things about our business plan, we're building full-spec labs. So most developers, they go and they'll build just the shell and then wait for a tenant. And then the tenant, they give them TI money and they build out their labs. We go ahead and build out the labs to a point to where then they can come in and very quickly get into space. We did one deal uh in the south, in the north, uh South Tower, uh that from start to finish, it was like two weeks. The tenant was literally in their space within two weeks. And and that's, you know, part of the market we try to to achieve. And so we will probably come to you and ask to be able to build some of this project out on a spec basis to where we have the labs ready for those tenants that need space immediately. When they raise, you know, a big chunk of money and need to start doing their research, it's hard for them to wa- wait, you know, six to eight months to go through design and and planning and then another six to eight months to build it. So when we get it further down the road for them, it makes their lives a lot easier. Um, but, you know, if we're all in the boat and rowing together, I don't see a lot of obstacles. I think it could be a very successful project.
Any other questions? Nothing? Okay, we have a slip from the audience. Uh, they'd like to speak of of this project. And um I don't know whether she wants to speak in favor of the subject or opposition because he.
Informational, thank you.
He cross on both of those, so. So then a deal both.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Chair Commissioners. Um, I'm curious about the environmental review. I recognize that the gross square area isn't very much different from the that which has previously been reviewed. And yet, um now it's about fifty percent of the parking that was previously required. To me, that seems to have an environmental impact. I am not um necessarily happy with Genentech setting an example for um shuttles and things like that, especially when I sit in traffic behind Genentech buses. Um, so I'm not certain that that this has been well thought out. And I will speak about environmental issues, which is what I, reason I got up here. I do want to say I am really happy to see these buildings not being, um, what was it, ten, eight and ten stories high? Um, and also, um, at the time, at the previous um approval, um, there were discussions about um the impacts on the marsh or the slough, whatever you want to call it, that is um in this map on the uh left side, but I think it's technically west of the property. Um, that um even with shorter buildings, it's going to have impacts on the um animals, the migratory animals. And also now light, which um might not have been as much of an issue uh with a garage than now a building that might be lit full overnight. Um, I'm also curious about um any consideration of sea level rise. And um in a meeting that I was at at the Water Board um about a month ago, um, I, uh, I think it was Bruce Wolf, but I'm not a hundred percent certain, had said, uh, or it could have been a BB CAG meeting where we had Greg Shirley there, had said that for what is out at Sierra Point, there are only two buildings for which have been um mitigated to um current um hydrid, hazardous cleanup standards. Um, I I think that's, I can't statute twenty-two or twenty-four. Um, and so, um, I'm, um, th- they, that this would require a a cleanup. And I'm um also concerned about the um bay trail that you pointed out of walking through the parking lot and that the parking lot is impinging um into this, what would be a setback for um the slough. And so I hear somebody saying, maybe they'll do something about the slough, maybe they'll clean it up. There shouldn't be any maybe in this. They're gonna have an impact to this area. They need to fix it up. Um, and so, um, another question I have is about the restaurant. The the um, the amount of restaurants that was previously allowed on the other property was thirty-two hundred square feet. And it looks like the restaurant that's proposed is nine thousand square feet or if, I I don't know. Somehow it looked like it was three times what um had been previously proposed. So um I'm curious about, um, I'm I'm just trying to imagine nine thousand square foot restaurant. Um, I've been to some of the restaurants um out um that are the old Ford manufacturer buildings uh in the redevelopment in Richmond, um which, when you get a really large space, they get really noisy and they're really unpleasant. So I I I um, I'm kind of curious about that. Um, I'm curious, I mentioned about the night light and that they're night-feeding herons out there. Um, some people have put up, um, I have seen migratory fish out there. And when I asked um exactly what might be migrating at the time, um, somebody said it actually could be an invasive perch, a little yellow perch. Um, but um then somebody, when I called Fish and Game or Fish and Wildlife, said, oh, well, whenever you see uh an animal you don't recognize, uh put it into some um alcohol and preserve it and and will tell you. And I'm like, I don't carry a little bottle of grain alcohol around with me. So I um would like it if you would ask for studies so that we do know what um the um issues are out there. Um, I'm really sorry that there is no um effort on using wind or solar energy and would like a full gener- uh a full definition of what their generator is. Is is this going to be a co-generator? Are they going to be burning garbage out there? Um, so I really need to understand what their uh generator is all about. Um, now that it's it's designed or designated, it has a designated spot. Um, I think that's um all. I do miss seeing any uh feedback from B C D C and Fish and Wildlife and Cal Recycle. Um, and would hope that uh, that um, that absent the environmental issues, that this could be something that we approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak uh for the commission? Okay, um, what I like to end this, we got some good information tonight. And um I have a question for the staff. Um, this is a revision of the original application. This is a revision of the original application. So now are we going to go through the entire process again, including the environmental issues? I think we addressed that in the last go-around. The hazardous material stuff and all of that, that was done in, in two thousand nine. And the site where it's going to be built is exactly the same, but it's going to be, just configuration has changed. So I'd like to get the staff's opinion as to whether we had to do the, the whole application again or just look at the elements that have changed.
Well, the applicant will be filing a revised design permit-
Okay.
-which again will be reflecting the changes as, as they discussed this evening relative to what was previously approved. There's some parameters in terms of what the, what the development agreement either allows for or provides for, and as long as they stay within those parameters, the fundamental use is not at issue or in question. In terms of the environmental, anytime you make a revision to a project, you have to reevaluate the environmental impacts. You know, there was a, a negative declaration done for this project, an addendum to it done for the development agreement last year. And we'll, you know, the environmental consultant will look at the changes to this project relative to those other environmental documents and, and evaluate whether this project impacts are, if they're any different or greater, then they will be making a conclusion as to how those can be mitigated or some other conclusion. But they would be, basically go through that exercise for this amended project.
The question is that some of these issues may be the, they're already handled in two thousand nine. So when the environmental consultant is going to come aboard, is he going to start from the beginning or is he going to look at what has changed?
They're going to be looking at the changes between what was previously determined to have a less significant impact in, in the, the project as it now exists.
Because if you're going to start from the day square one, it's going to take a much longer time and, which is okay in certain cases, but this one is, if it's already done and the, and the consultant can say that, that's already was addressed-
Again, that's-
-and these are the changes that happen as a result of that, that will be a preferred approach, I think.
That's, that's correct. That's, that's the process that will, will be undertaken of this.
Do you guys agree with that, that we don't need to, I mean, we will leave it up to the environmental consultant?
I'm wondering then perhaps if staff is taking notes of the public testimony of issues such as the two-story parking garage and so on and so forth, if all of those things are-
The annotated and relayed to the environmental consultant and, you know, they might as well address that because they'll, they'll be coming up in the formal public hearing, so it'd be appropriate for them to address.
As far, as far as the lights along the, in the parking garage area and all that, that was discussed in detail in two thousand nine, as I recall, along the freeway, when, because of the entire garage was facing the freeway. So that study was already, I mean, that question was already addressed at that time. And regarding the access to the, to the project itself, going through the, you know, what kind of impact it will have that on the trail, that might be a new issue that may need to be discussed a little bit.
Yeah, we'll have that discussion. Again, the, the primary bay trail runs along the waterfront within the hundred-foot band. So we're talking about is really, you know, and ideally if the Baylands ever redevelops or whatever, then the trail's extended along the other side of the freeway. So we're talking about here in this, what I'd call just east-west kind of connection through the bottom of the project, south end of the project, is really more of a, it's kind of a cut-through or a way to complete the loop. It's not the bay trail as, you know, the primary recreational amenity. It's, it's just not what that segment would function as. It's not like the bay trail next to the marina or along the water, you know, along the, the green bands, along the north and, and east borders. So, but, you know, obviously if we're going to create a trail connection, you want to make it safe and comfortable and attractive and we'll work with the applicant to do so.
Yeah, are there, that portion of the trail that goes around the parking lot at the bottom, are there existing trails on the existing buildings that that's going to connect to or does it just end at the street or what's the alignment?
It's really just, you know, my mind is a way to, to loop the system, you know, so someone could, you know, maybe some people will terminate their walk at the north-westerly corner and come back. Some people might, well, if they work in a different office building, maybe they want to be able to cut through and get back to their office building. So it's a matter of creating kind of an alternative-
I'm just wondering if that road there has sidewalks or a trail that extends from that point?
There's sidewalks certainly on the street and you can get, when you're to that point on the, on the street, you can get via sidewalk anywhere internal to sharepoint.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
I would just like to compliment the developer and designers. I think you've taken what looked like an afterthought building on that corner and made it look very innovative, very interesting, attractive. I asked you about what obstacles you thought you might face because I, I understand the transportation issues, the isolation, and what you're proposing, at least what we've seen, you've created something very attractive and it certainly could breathe a lot of life into the entire area out there. In terms of some of the comments from Stillworth, perhaps you can take it into account with some landscaping on the side where the parking garage is to kind of minimize the light exposure, not illuminate the parking lot, make sure the lights are downward-facing. I think also with that two-story parking lot, the question I have right now, and you don't have to answer it, but I, I'm anxious to see what you do with that podium. What are we going to see? Are we going to see little slits with lots of lights in there with the parking garage or are we going to see screening? Or preferably, I'd like to see some nice landscaping because that would enhance the trail, it would enhance the view from Brisbane and the highway. And I, I think you honestly have an opportunity with at least what you've shown us to make a, a real showpiece at that corner and bring renewed interest. So I'm excited, I want to see what you bring back.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of the interesting things you can do to hide the impact of that parking lot.
Right.
I've seen many and I'm sure when it comes to that point, I think the design review maybe suggests that you can bring some of those ideas for us to look at it, so.
And also in terms of your nine thousand square foot restaurant, I've seen the cove, it's divided up into different areas, it's not noisy, it has all different kinds of themes. I understand you're trying to create a, a campus, it's a lifestyle, and I think it, it brings a lot of interest there. It's not going to be an isolated office building. I, I would think people working in other buildings will be very interested to come there.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the, the impression I got with that, the project I'm talking about in South City. It's, it's well-spread out, so there is no, you know, chance of getting all this noise at one big hall, hallway. It's, the way it's divided, it's really, really creative. So I'm sure that you're going to create the same kind of, you know, and I'm sure that that will be your concern also. And I'm really pleased that you decided to, you know, come before us for this particular project because for a long time I given up the hope, every time I go for a walk over there, I see all this dust flying around and at one point the project started and then it stopped for a long time. So we like to see that particular area sort of, you know, come up, that, that whole marina area, if you look at it, it's a beautiful sight, but it's been sitting there for the last twenty-five years. Nothing has been done other than a couple of those hotels and then a couple, few buildings, but there's a lot of spaces still there. It can be, and once you have the campus like that, you, it may attract other people to come into that area also. And we can do a lot along that marina because if you look at this marina versus the one in the Oyster Point, there's quite a bit of difference in terms of what they have done and what we have done. So hopefully these projects like this will generate some interest to, to do something in that area and make it really, really viable. And it's good for the city also because it will bring a lot of revenues for the city because we've been losing all this money for a long time. It's sitting there, nothing been done. So I'm glad that you brought this up and, you know, we're looking forward to work with you all. And hopefully you can, you know, twenty-twenty is a pretty, you know, aggressive schedule, but hopefully you will meet that, we like to see that, that be done. And hopefully you'll, I mean, also try to take the notes of tonight's meeting and maybe in the next meeting you can come up with some of the answers, some of the questions that were raised, including the questions raised by the Dana Delbert, to see what you can do to address those. And you have anything to say?
No, I mean, I would just like to continue with what Commissioner Macken was saying is that I think the design is absolutely stunning. So I'm, I'm really glad that, you know, you're, you're going through with this project and you're excited about it. I think we're excited about it. I just hope you would think more about, you know, trying to incorporate more alternative energy, you know, make us all a lot happier, but otherwise, you know, yeah, I'd like to see this go forward, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a combination of alternate energy as well as conservative efforts to where they, you're going to design inside to make it such a way that the energy loss is minimal so that you can compensate because of your lack of space for the solar. So that will be, I guess, your primary goal. Anything else you want to add? So what's the next step now will be to wait for the design review and that will be when we anticipate that.
Um, in the spring of the year.
Spring, okay. So that's about a couple of months. Okay, so you guys have a lot of work to do between now and next time you come before us and sure.
I just don't want to mislead in any way. So the, the, the project will look basically what you see there in twenty-twenty timeframe, depending on how quick we can get through city approvals for the revised, our alternative site plan. Tenant occupancy, when we could actually, after doing all the TIs and, and finishing the interiors of the building, would probably fall more in the first part of twenty-twenty-one.
The interior is always takes time, you know, you know that. The finishing part is always the difficult part. So we understand that as long as you have structures and, you know, right now it's just sitting there with nothing there, just, so, okay. And so we will reschedule that, I guess, and you're going to let us know. Thank you very much for your time and hopefully you got some good feedback from us and good luck, come back with some good ideas and we look forward to see you again. The next item on the agenda is items initiated by staff.
So several items that the council considered at their meeting last week. One is they did adopt the, the zoning for Parkside. So that has officially been adopted and be in effect in thirty days. So-
It was introduced.
Introduced.
It was introduced, so it'll go to a second reading.
Reading, yeah, first reading. So that'll be effective in more like sixty days or forty-five days. Anyway, but we're about finished with that, so that's very exciting for everybody to have that done. The council also adopted the zoning for Northwest Bay Shore, the M, limiting the M1 and dealing with the Martin Substation part of the site. So that was approved by the council as well. And the council also directed staff to come back with a modification to the, the cannabis business regulations in terms of permitted locations. So Julie will be back with an application in very short order reflecting what the council desires were in that regard. So that's all I have.
Okay. Items initiated by the commission. Anything that you want to bring it up, any of you?
Yeah, I have something. I asked by email a week or two ago if we'd heard anything from the council on the issue of the zoning maps for the Baylands and we hadn't heard anything at that time.
Yeah.
So I'd just like to revisit that question.
I have not been able to get a formal response from the city attorney yet. It's been gone over the holidays as well, so as soon as I get a more definitive answer from him, I will certainly advise the chair and schedule as, as appropriate.
I mean, I, I for one would sort of be interested in a little dialogue and I don't know if that would be best done at a meeting or if we should just have a, a subcommittee meeting some Wednesday when he's in the office or-
That certainly, I mean, I, I guess if the, if the council, I mean, the, if the commission wants to appoint a member or two to have sort of serve as an ad hoc committee, that would certainly be your, your prerogative and it might make this go a little more productively perhaps than scheduling it for evening. I'm also getting the city attorney on our regular coun, our commission nights isn't the easiest thing to do frankly, so that might speed this along if you want to go ahead and do that as a group, if that's your collective decision.
Yeah, I won't object to that and, you know, the, why don't, why don't you find out this schedule from the attorney and then let us know what are the-
He's in office on Wednesdays, right?
What are the best time for us and then we can, in the next meeting, we can have a, you know, committee form who wants to go to that.
Form it right now?
Oh, you can do that right now.
Perhaps you'd like to come with me or you appoint someone else?
Yeah, I will come with you, no problem. Anybody else wants to come? We, we don't want the whole commission over.
Ad hoc, you should have two.
Two, yeah. More than two, yeah. So maybe Commissioner Macken, you want to go instead of me?
Well, you expressed the interest. I, I'm more than willing to, but-
Yeah, I think maybe you and Commissioner Anderson should can go and I will point out for you what happened. So leave it in your good hands and that will be really good.
Fine.
Don't want to rope you into something.
No, 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 I don't, I, I don't feel wrong.
Yeah, okay, because you, you are very, very good at that too, I noticed, so we nice.
I try to do my best.
Okay, thank you.
And how do you want to schedule that? Do you just want to reach out to him and then contact us when he's available?
I will.
Available time?
Exactly.
And my schedule can be flexible. I have flexible work, so I could do it during business hours with advance notice.
Well, that's, that's nice, all right.
I'll try to get that scheduled as soon as, as soon as he's available on a, most likely be on a Wednesday because that's when he's in the office.
That would work for me, thank you so much.
Okay, and with that, I don't have anything, you know, if no one else has anything to report, and may I have the-
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of January twenty-third at seven-thirty PM.
Second motion?
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
January twenty-third, I may not be attending.